Good evening, everyone, and welcome. As I called the order, the regular school board meeting of independent school district number eight eight two is six P M. On Monday, May nineteenth, twenty twenty five. And everyone's here present, so please stay in and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And now we're looking for approval of this evening's tentative agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Melissa Curtis, seconded by Casey Root. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed, please say no. Motion passes six zero. We are on to citizen comments. We have no citizen comments this evening, so we'll move right along to fiscal stability. This is an action item of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Melissa Curtis, seconded by Casey Root. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Motion passes six zero. Now we're moving on to collaborative connections, and I will pass it on over to Superintendent Eric Olson to go over the acceptance of gifts.
Uh, we have three donors. Good. All right. We have, uh, three donors, uh, that came forward with, uh, some grand, uh, donations. The first one, um, the Minnesota Vikings came forward with fifteen thousand dollars. Um, in order for our high school to start a girls' flag football program. I did get to see them, uh, play in, at Tech, uh, yesterday on Sunday. Uh, Minneapolis Foundation, five thousand dollars, uh, for the Monty Python's Robotics Team. Um, and then Compass Pest Control, more than fifty hardcover books valued at a thousand dollars going to Little Mountain, Pinewood, and Monticello Middle School Libraries. And I bring those forward to you today. Uh, great, absolutely, um, amazing donations, um, to our, uh, school community.
Therefore, be resolved by the Monticello School Board number eight eight two to gratefully accept the following donations. Minnesota Vikings, fifteen thousand dollars for the high school girls' flag football program. The Minneapolis Foundation, five thousand dollars for Monty Python's Robotics Team. And from Compass Pest Control, more than fifty hardcover books va- valued at a thousand dollars for Little Mountain, Pinewood, and MHS Libraries.
Second. Moved by Jeff Hegley, seconded by Melissa Curtis. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Motion passes six zero. And speaking of our donors, our school district.
All right. Uh, thanks for handing it over, uh, for let her be here. Uh, June sixteenth is gonna be a donor and volunteer reception, um, prior to the school board meeting, so please mark your calendars. Devin, he will also, um, share a calendar invite, but we'd love to have the school board members there. Half hour early, um, for the mingling session, uh, just to recognize, um, the volunteers and our donors. Um, our donors, um, to present date have donated one hundred ninety thousand, five hundred seventy, and there's an additional one hundred seventy-five thousand, four hundred twenty-five dollars, um, that went to our scholarship committee. So I think it just shows the support that our community has. When you look at those two amounts, one going to our seniors and, and the other one's going to all programming across the board, we're just really fortunate, and it's, uh, it's, we're on our second year doing this, uh, uh, reception, and I think it's really cool to, um, you know, value the people capital that come in to volunteer, but then also the, um, you know, the capital that's also donated, um, to the tune of these dollar amounts is really important. Um, so like I said, that, um, uh, reception will be here in the activity room just before the June sixteenth meeting, um, and it'll go from five to five forty-five. It gives us fifteen minute time to, um, get ready for the school board meeting, so. Uh, yeah, I said a half hour. I'm sorry. It's a forty-five minute, uh, session, five to five forty-five. We'll send calendar.
Yeah, and it was a, it was a great event last year, and I got to meet some people, so looking forward to saying thank you and shaking some hands with the people that have made a significant impact on our district. All right, let's move on to item number C. We'd like to welcome up next year's student representatives to come sit at the table for this portion. Um, help me welcome up Dawson Bleak, Natasha Fortsey, and Jordi Gertz, and Superintendent Eric Olson is gonna be going over the Student School Board Representative Conference.
Yeah, it's pretty cool. I had the opportunity earlier this month to spend, um, a day with these three, um, and we, um, we chartered a bus or a van from Hoagland's and had them drive so that we could really have a meeting all the way up, just talking about more getting to know you stuff, and then, um, enjoy a full day conference together. Uh, we did have to cut it a little bit short at a meeting back here, but, uh, I think we just missed the, uh, part of the last session, um, but then we got to just talk all the way back more on what we learned. And I'd just really like to turn it over to you three, uh, kinda gave a couple prompts, but, uh, go ahead and, and share those things that, uh, you are gonna take away from there, and then the look to the future of what you hope that, uh, we, you could bring forward in twenty-five, twenty-six. Go ahead and pass the mic. We can't wait.
Awesome. So, uh, this was an awesome opportunity for the three of us, uh, speaking for myself at least. Um, we had a lot of takeaways from what we learned, uh, talking with other people from other districts, uh, and personally, I think it was just really cool to see how, uh, students in high school are able to, uh, kinda work with like board members and teachers and just other adults in the district, um, and that we can work together to really improve, um, what's going on within the student body. Um, also, something that stood out to me was how, um, the school board itself is one of the most sought-out governing positions, just because it's the most accessible to the public. Uh, so those two things were, uh, really big for me, uh, and I'm excited to, uh, go into this next school year being a student representative, uh, and I feel like this next year is really going to give me a deeper understanding of kinda what goes on within the district.
Thanks.
I think my two takeaways from this were, um, the number one was how they talked a lot about how success is not equal to numbers. A lot of time, I think, even as students and as teachers and, and as admin, probably even the school board, we often think things like test scores, A C T scores, G P A, graduation rates, that's what means success, but success is a lot more than that. And another thing that I thought was a big takeaway was we talked a lot about how, how can we make a school a place where everybody belongs, a school a place where everybody wants to be and where they feel safe. And I think one thing that I hope to do is I hope to just educate the student body on what a school board can do for them and encourage them to sought out after this if they have anything that they would like, um, like change in the school.
My two, uh, biggest takeaways from that conference where, um, I was talking with one, uh, woman who was a student representative, I can't remember where she was from Minnesota, but she had actually proposed, um, the idea of bringing a community, ooh, whoa, sorry. She proposed the idea of bringing a community center, um, to her community, and I think she was a grade younger than me, too. So that kinda put a big, um, doubt in my mind to ease. Uh, I feel like a lot of my life I've kinda thought about how I can't really do a lot to my community or for my community because of my age, but seeing that really kinda reversed my view and also kinda brought the mind that my age has influence. Along with that, I also learned or took away that a lot of this opportunity is not only valuable, but it's also helping with building character, and, uh, I'm just excited to work with the rest of the school board, uh, and with Mr. Olson, and then next year, uh, I hope to be able to be a better voice for the people in our schools that don't want to talk to administration or don't have the time or don't know how to get their voices heard by administration, um, just to be a good echo for that.
I think just in conclusion, I think it was a day well spent, and I know as a school board, uh, you've been asking me to be able to take this to another level with our student reps, and this is our first ever, um, opportunity to do something as far as training goes, um, several months before they, um, take over their new position. So it was a day for me that I'll never forget because I learned so much, and, um, both our time up there and our time back, and, um, we just, uh, I think, just really jelted. I think we talked and related it to like a, a sports team, you never, you know, you don't really know your team until you get on the road together, and we got on the road together already, so it was pretty cool. But, um, you know, and then the last point of emphasis that I'd like to make is that, um, both this year's student reps and, and obviously, I think, as you guys are all smiling, next year's student reps, uh, we're in good hands. We, our future's looking bright because of our wonderful people that, uh, are coming through our system and helping us, um, you know, navigate, uh, changes or navigate growing and navigate us listening so that we can hear what you're telling us. So thanks for being the leader, all of three of you.
Yeah, I mean, that, just hearing your guys' takeaways was significant. So, and each one of yours very different, and so I'm really excited to see you put some hard work in this next year and see what it can do for our schools as well. Um, there's so much more than the numbers and making sure everybody's heard is huge, so, yeah, welcome. Anybody else have any questions?
Yeah, I got a question for you. What do you love most about Monticello Schools?
I got it.
Thank you, Jordi.
So, uh, at least, uh, within the high school, there's so many different activities, like I feel like there's, uh, we're doing a good job at giving everyone like an outlet, uh, for interests of their own, and I feel like, uh, for school pride, we do a good job at, um, representing our own district, uh, as we go out, uh, to other cities and towns, um, and also just, um, just being involved, like, almost everyone I talk to is involved in a sport or club or activity, um, and so just that pride of we're Monticello is just super inspiring.
I agree with that. Um, I feel like a lot of, especially with like looking and touring at colleges, a lot of them pride themselves on, um, being able to have a spot for everybody, uh, whether, whatever their interests be, and I feel like that's something Monticello also does an incredible job with, especially as a high school and not even a college. Um, I also think that Monticello is one of those schools where, compared to every other high school I've been at, it seems like a school where people are genuinely happy, if that kinda makes sense. Um, I've been to a couple other ones, and a lot of them feel like a lot more of your stereotypical high school where people just go there to get stuff done and then they go home and hang out, but I feel like at Monticello, it's a lot more uplifting to be around people who also want to be there with you. Um, I think a lot of people look at high school as kind of that social outlet, and that's something Monticello does a very good job at.
I think my answer here would be like the community. I know, like statistically speaking, we might not have a very diverse school, but I think there's so many different kinds of people in our school that there's like a friend group that everyone has a place where they feel like they belong.
Any other questions? Well, great job, and thank you. You're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting. I know some of you have some concerts going on tonight, so you're gonna have to jet out, so feel free to leave whenever you have to, um, but we're looking forward to this next year.
Thank you very much.
Welcome.
Well, you got your first taste at the table. I love it.
All right, now we're gonna move on to item number seven, safe and healthy culture. I'd like to welcome up our Director of Nutrition Services, Ms. Laura Whacker Hansen, to talk about the Nutrition Services Year in Review.
Having me. Um, just gonna give a quick year in review of how things have gone with Nutrition Services this first year of self-operation. It's been an exciting, very busy year. So Nutrition Services by the numbers, we operated meal service at seven school sites this year. Uh, we have thirty-nine staff members, and so far as of last Friday, we had served one hundred and sixty-eight thousand, three hundred and eighty-five breakfasts and four hundred and forty-eight thousand, five hundred and fifty-three lunches. So lots of food going into the bellies of our students, nourishing their minds, keeping them full and focused. Um, participation this year, this is the metric that I use, um, to measure the health of our program. Participation reflects the, uh, percentage of the student body that participates in the meal. Um, it's a metric that I use rather than total meals, cause it's, uh, can changes and reflects the, um, enrollment. So for breakfast this year, our elementary average was forty percent, which was up four percent over last year. Middle school was at thirty-two percent, up two percent, um, and then the high school was at eighteen percent, which was up three percent participation. Um, lunch participation was excellent this year. Elementary averaged seventy-four percent, um, middle school was at eighty-three percent, which for a middle school is unbelievable, um, and our high school was at sixty-four percent, which is also very good for high school participation. We saw increases in participation at all levels, um, and just a really, really great, great start to the year for participation, so. Uh, just gonna talk a little bit about the program direction over the course of this year and some of the focus areas, um, so building our foundation, focusing on high-quality recipes and ingredients, and creating a roadmap for the future. So building our foundation, investing in our program infrastructure. Um, the first thing that I had to do when I got here was figure out literally what are we working with, right? Um, needed to get in there, do a lot of preventative maintenance on our equipment, figure out, do we have enough equipment? How does it work? Has it been serviced recently? What do we need to plan for the future? What do we need to do right away? So lots of equipment review, lots of just getting in the kitchens and looking at things even like spatulas, spoons, you know, hot pads, that seems really silly, but those little things that if we're gonna really move forward with a program, we gotta build that foundation first. Um, so equipment review and upgrades, we did have several things that needed to be addressed right away this school year. You can see we got, uh, brand-new serving lines at Pinewood, which was a huge upgrade for, um, that kitchen. Uh, we have a new dish machine at Pinewood, um, and then several other smaller things that were purchased for other kitchens, things like heating and holding cabinets. Uh, we had lots of maintenance and repairs done on various ovens, coolers, and freezers, um, and then also building out, um, a needs assessment for what needs to be addressed over the summer and then over the coming years, things that need to be replaced and upgraded. Um, a big part of that equipment review is also taking a look at our goals for what we want to serve, what we want our meal service to look like, and figuring out, do we have the right equipment to be able to do that? Um, our meal delivery program, so delivering meals out to the workforce center for the co-op and then also out to nature base. Um, that was definitely a program that over the last few years was just kind of a, let's get it out to them, let's do it, which was awesome, but I wanted to build out a more sustainable version of that program, um, so that we're able to make sure the students who are serviced out at those locations are receiving the same quality meals that the students who are in our traditional buildings are. Uh, so we purchased a new delivery van, um, and new, uh, delivery carts, um, that are more ergonomic, safer for our staff to be using, um, and just mean that the food that the students are getting at that locations is higher quality, which was very exciting. Um, and then I have to say a build out of our recipe and ingredient database, this is something that I've been working on and our staff has been really great with. We literally started with zero recipes. We started with a blank system, um, in July, and so just building out literally every single ingredient, every recipe, the website, just getting all of that started from scratch. So that has been that foundation that we have been building this year. Focus on high-quality recipe and ingredients, student-focused and nutrition-forward. One of the changes I wanted to make sure we made immediately was an investment in the quality of the food that we're serving for our students. That's something that, um, as they were getting ready to do self-op next year, that was something they heard over and over, right? Uh, we want higher-quality food. So right away at the beginning of the year, making sure that we were using higher-quality proteins, more fresh fruits and vegetables, and offering more student choice. Uh, we also moved, um, more autonomy in the type of choices of fruits and vegetables happening in each school, so the kitchens and the cooks get to choose what gets served every day based on the needs of their students and the likes of their students, and then recipes and menus that reflect current trends and student tastes. One of the great things about being a self-op program is that we have access to all of our data, all of our sales data, and in real time, I can see what was popular, what do the students like, how many of this breakfast did they like versus this breakfast, and I can make sure that we're really easily, quickly and easily adapting to what the students are liking, and it's not taking a long time to change those things. So, um, I think that's something we really kicked off this year, and I'm excited to continue to build on that next year. Um, and then creating a roadmap for the future. How do we get where we want to go? Um, we did a lot of great training this year with our staff. I cannot say enough about the Nutrition Services staff. They have been so excited, so supportive, and they just love the students in our district. They would do anything for them. They want to make sure that they're full and focused. They have been so on board with all of the changes that are happening, you know, in schools and especially nutrition, it's kind of like trying to fix a bicycle while you're riding it. It can be kind of hard. The food has to get out every single day, whether or not it's something new or something we've done before, and the staff is amazing. Um, we focused this year on productivity and efficiency, really looking at the systems that we had in place, um, within the kitchens and making sure that, um, all of our staff felt like they had the training they needed, that we were looking at times and schedules and the way we were cooking things, making sure they knew how to use their equipment properly, um, those types of things. Uh, we had, uh, CISO come in, which is a consulting company, and do a Nutrition Services operation assessment for us. Um, we just finished that up, uh, last week, which was very exciting, um, just having that outside, uh, view after this first year and being able to give us a little bit of a roadmap for what we wanna do over the next few years while we build out the program. And then personally, for myself, just doing a lot of listening and learning this year, um, trying to figure out what's working, what's not working, what do you like, what do you not like from our staff, our community, administration, and especially our students. Uh, I really love getting out just into the lunchroom and talking with our students, hearing what they think. Um, it's the highlight of my week when I get to get out into the lunchrooms, so. Uh, just a few brief highlights of some of the things that we've done this year. A lot of the, uh, work that I have been doing has been behind-the-scenes foundation building, um, but we have been able to do a fun few events. Um, two of these photos here are from our Kids' Choice Days at our elementary school. These are events where, um, the principals select a group of students, and I get to meet with the students for a brief period of time. We talk about what goes into a school lunch, nutrition, the requirements of what we have to serve, and then the students and I actually design a menu, and it gets served at both of the elementary schools on a specific date. So we had our Little Mountain Meal a few weeks ago, and then coming up next Thursday is our Pinewood Elementary Kids' Choice, and I hear Eric will be serving that day, so, um, those are super fun, one of my favorite things to do. Um, I also wanted to highlight our Thanksgiving Meal this year. That was just a really wonderful, um, you know, all-district-community event. Um, students really loved it. It was fun to have the same thing served at all of the buildings. Uh, we did it the week before Thanksgiving, which is always fun for students. They can get a little Thanksgivinged out that week of Thanksgiving, um, and it was just a great event for everyone. And then I have a little picture of a food item at our middle school last week for our, uh, Read-a-Thon Top Earners. They had their executive dining experience, um, and I brought in a friend of mine who is a chef down in the Twin Cities to cook a four-course meal for our students, uh, which was very exciting for our middle schoolers who got to participate in that. So just a few of the fun things that we've done this year. And then I can answer any questions that you guys have.
What question? Mark, I know you have one.
Yeah, I look.
I just wonder when you're gonna bring samples.
Yes!
Look at all this.
We can definitely, we can definitely, uh, look at doing some samples.
I'm kidding. Um, you seem really happy. Are you, are you enjoying it as much as you imply you are?
I am, I am. It's been a great challenge, um, but it's just, it's really, really fun to be here every day to get to build out the program the way that this community wants. Yeah, it's just been a really, really great year.
Fantastic.
Challenging year, but a great year.
We, I think as a community, we love the, the health initiatives that you're putting in place, so thank you.
This is the first year my daughter's eaten lunch, eaten hot lunch every single day.
Oh, my gosh.
You did something well, so good job.
Thank you.
In the last three years, we've packed for my daughter, and she switched this year on her own. Like, she's like, nope, I'm gonna have hot, and then it was hot, and hot, and hot, and hot. I'm like, wow. That's a significant, kudos, good job to you, because the kids just don't do that, so the numbers are there.
Thank you so much.
Anything else?
Students?
Personally, you know, they started doing the Chicken Tenner Thursdays, and there's a group of us, on Thursdays, we just parade around, and we're like, guys, it is Chicken Tenner Thursdays, and you know, it's just a great day. So, you know, even something as simple as that, but the kids love it. As a student who's all around it, we love it, but also the staff at the high school who are serving us, they have the best attitudes, and they just, they bring light into all of our days.
It was cool getting out into the kitchens the last couple of weeks, trying to get and make sure that everybody felt valued during School Lunch Hero Day, which was back on the third?
First Friday of the month.
First Friday of the month, yeah. And I know Tina got in to serve here recently, and sure enough, when I went through Pinewood today, they said, hey, Tina got in to serve, you better step up to the plate, so how can you turn that down? So I am excited to get in there and serve. I haven't done that since I was principal there, so, yeah, should be fun.
Well, thank you. We appreciate your hard work, and we look forward to what more comes this next year. All right, now we're gonna move on to item B, which is the future school board dates for October 2025 through 2026, and I'll pass that on to Superintendent Eric Olson.
Excuse me. I worked with Devany Moore here recently, right after the last workboard work session, but as a school board, you guys had wanted to continue with the trend of first and third Mondays, and with the same trend of the first Monday being a little bit earlier so that we could have a work session after. So we built out the calendar together, and Devany has it here for you. Anytime there are not two weeks in between is because there is a nationally-recognized holiday that we had to account for. So here are the dates, and as soon as you approve them, Devany will get calendar invites out to you. So if you can look through that, but we just kept the same trend going that you guys talked about at the work session, and then anytime there's not two weeks, it's because there is a nationally-recognized holiday that we have to work around.
Any questions about the dates? You know, we chatted about last work session. Okay, this is an action item.
So moved.
Second, by Casey Root, seconded by Melissa Curtis. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Motion passes six-zero. That will bring us to item C, where we'd like to welcome up Director of Business Services Tina Burkholder and Matthew Hammer and Beth Downs from Ellers to go over our operating levy scenario, scenarios. Just a reminder, board members, this is an action item tonight. I will have some specific directions on how we go about it after we're done listening to the presentation, and then there'll be an opportunity to ask questions or we go for our vote.
Right. So we're just gonna review kind of what we went over at the work session last time. So you've seen a lot of this already, but just as a reminder, our fund balance policy, seven-fourteen, talks about ways we can maintain our fund balance, one, to increase revenues or if we would decrease expenditures through budget reductions to align our budget. And so this presentation is mainly focusing on increasing revenues to help our budget alignment. So we'll go over two levy scenarios that we talked about at the Budget Committee. One was to renew the existing operating referendum levy, and another scenario was to revoke and replace with a new operating referendum levy. And hopefully, at the end of this, we can have a consensus on a solution that ensures fiscal sustainability, maintains quality educational programs, and continues to meet the needs of our students and community. So with scenario one, it is to, the board would renew our existing operating referendum by June thirtieth of 2026, and also look at approving a two-million capital projects levy for 2026 that would go out to the voters. And just as a reminder, this was a little snippet of the tax impact when Ellers presented in March, what a one-million tax impact would be for a capital projects levy. And it's really small print, but, for example, for a six, for three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand tax home, home value, it would be sixty-two dollars per year for that tax impact. With that scenario, there are some assumptions. We would still need to continue to align our budget by about two-point-one million for the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. There are some unknowns. We still don't have, the legislative session doesn't have an approved budget for the session, and capital projects levy, it would remove one-point-two million from our general fund, starting in twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and that would be part of the capital projects levy. So within this scenario, our forecast doesn't improve too much. It barely breaks eight percent for a projected unassigned fund balance for twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-seven, twenty-eight at six-point-four-one percent, and then it really drops after that. So it's not a long-term viable solution for us, but just as an awareness, that's kind of what our forecast would look like with those two, for that, that first scenario with some of those assumptions. For scenario two, we would look to revoke and replace with a new operating referendum this fall of 2025. We would revoke the existing operating referendum, which is about seven-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars per pupil, and replace it with the operating referendum of one-thousand-five-hundred-and-fifty dollars per pupil. And that tax impact, again, this is a snippet from Ellers. So for a three-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand-dollar home, when you revoke the existing levy, there is a tax impact of two-hundred-and-seventy-eight dollars that would go away, but then with the new referendum, it would be an increase of five-hundred-and-ninety-four annually per year. So the net tax impact would be three-hundred-and-sixteen dollars annually per year. So with this scenario, again, some of the assumptions, we still need to align our budget for the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. Again, the unknowns with the legislative session and where we're sitting from that. With this, we would not do a capital projects levy, but we would increase the technology budget by four-hundred-thousand each year, because that was what was needed in the ten-year tech plan to make sure we have one-to-one devices, we're covering our security needs, we're covering the auditorium needs. So we're continuing a lot of those things that was in that ten-year tech plan. And with this, and why that number was selected, we wanted to try to hit that eight percent fund balance around the twenty-nine, thirty school year. So with that forecast, we end for the twenty-nine, thirty school year, seven-point-four-nine percent. So again, a lot of these are estimates, so we'll probably hit that eight percent, because you never know what's gonna happen with legislation, or, you know, if enrollment really drops, or whatever the case may be, but all things equal, that is what would have some, a little bit longer-term financial stability for the school district. So other thoughts with the scenarios? So in scenario two, I talked about an election in 2025, as that generates revenue for the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. An election in twenty-six generates revenue for the twenty-seven, twenty-eight school year. And it's our last chance to seek additional revenue before the existing levy expires. And also, the first year or two, we should commit some of that additional revenue that's generated with the levy to help get us through the twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and twenty-nine, thirty school years. So now, just looking for the board to make a motion for action to direct District Administration on a scenario to prepare for. We can have formal resolutions prepared for the June second board meeting. We just wanted to wait officially until after the legislative session is done and complete, just to make sure there's no changes with election laws, and make sure everything is kind of set and final, so hopefully, things will be done on time or done quickly in a special session so that we could continue doing that. And also, to help with the discussion, we have Matt from Ellers to help with any other questions that the board members have. So I'll invite Matt up.
Right, board members, this is your opportunity to ask any additional questions. And for the public to know, this has been heavily talked about by all board members that are here. This isn't anything new. We just did two million in reduction this year. We're doing two million in reduction next year. That's still part of whatever decision we make here. If we choose to do nothing, we're looking at a six-million-dollar shortfall the following year. And so the board knows that it's decisions that have to be made, and I know the Budget Committee has put a significant amount of work. I know Mark was a significant part of helping put together the revoke and new plan, so now's your opportunity to ask questions.
I just, just second what Jamie said, like, this is not our first time going through this, this is a discussion, and really, just the two, number one is to renew the levy as is, but the second option would be going back to the voters this fall, so that's really the big one on the table, so.
I'd like to go back to this, the slide that's about scenario one, renew existing with all of the figures on it for a second. And I think the, the bottom figure on the far right is the telling one, eleven million dollars in debt. That, that seems a significant shortfall. We either get started in, now, to invest in our community, or we're going to have to pick up the ball much later, and it's going to be much, much harder, is my way of looking at it. So looking at those figures, I thought those were really telling figures to me.
Probably before we even get there, I mean, we reached statutory operating debt in twenty-nine, thirty with a negative five-point-seven percent fund bounce, so the state would come in and kind of tell us what to do to get us moving in the right direction.
I think, I think that's a very important point to remember, that if we don't, the state will come over and take over our schools.
I can make a few comments based on what we've talked about over the past few months in the Budget Committee meetings, which align with what all of you have said here. We're trying really hard to not be short-sighted in this automatic renewal decision, where we see that we can get two or three years out of an automatic renewal, and then we have a big problem, and so we're gonna have to go back to the voters at some point in time. And a lot of our conversation has been based around, if we do the automatic renewal, what is the likelihood that the voters are gonna come back and support an additional operating levy in what's gonna feel like pretty near-term, even though it's two, three years out? So the long-term approach then would be to revoke or walk away from this automatic renewal, which guarantees us a couple million dollars a year, so there's risk with that. But we'd like to think we get some goodwill built with the community by saying, hey, we're not gonna take advantage of this state law change, and instead, we'll build out a budget that we can count on for five years. And like you see here, it's pretty well dialed in to thirty, thirty-one, where we would be in a good spot financially. So it's a little bit of risk, but it's gotta be a long-term play, so I think what we've heard here tonight from the board members aligns with that thinking.
Yeah, we were voted in to do what's best for our schools, our future and our children, so that's the decision we have to make. Any questions for our Ellers representative that's here tonight? Anything you'd like to say?
Oh, I just think statutorily, your deadline is August twelfth to call for an election, and most districts are doing that. Tina said they're waiting for the legislative session to adjourn and moving forward with that in, in June, so I think your time might make sense.
Have you been hearing from the district, I think I, when I went down for the school board data at the State Capitol, I was hearing comments from other school districts. Are you hearing some of the other school districts around us dealing with the same sort of budget shortfalls?
Yes, the answer is yes to that question, and you won't be alone by holding an election, remember, across the state.
And, and I heard that anecdotally, as well as when we've been talking in our meetings, so thank you. I just wanted to confirm that.
All right, are we done with discussion? Anything else? Okay, now, good, seeing no further discussion, I will move now to entertain a motion to approve, we'll just go for scenario number two, revoke and replace, if anyone wants to move on that.
I'll make a motion to direct District Administration to prepare formal resolutions for scenario two to be brought forward at the June second school board meeting. This scenario is the revoke and replace scenario, as presented by Tina Burkholder and Matthew.
I would second the motion.
All right, motion's been made by Jeff Hegley, seconded by Mark Branson. We will now proceed with a roll-call vote. I will now call for the roll-call vote. Please respond with an aye, nay, or abstain. Casey Root.
Aye.
Melissa Curtis.
Aye.
Jeff Hegley.
Aye.
Mark Branson.
Aye.
Mary Bartel.
Aye.
Amy Seben votes aye. Thank you. Let us, the record show, motion passes six-zero. Thank you, Tina. Coming all the way here tonight.
Just before you go, just to make sure, if we could get you back, to make sure that both Devany, myself, the school board, get a little training on dates and, and just overall running an election, especially after legislation, in case there's any changes. I've went through them before, but we would love for new board members and our board liaison to be able to be part of that. So if you're willing, I've heard you, we might come back and maybe would do, work with us on a work session? Yep? Okay, sounds good. Okay, awesome.
All right, now we're gonna move on to item D, and we will bring up Director of Human Resources Mr. Rob Danicur to go over second reading of policy.
All right, Chair Seben, members of the board, Superintendent Olson. A little bit of a unique agenda for us tonight for policies. You may have noticed that, following the second read of policies for this evening, we do have a first read of policies for tonight as well, and I'll explain a little bit more about that when I get there. So after I review the policies for second read, that'll be an action taken by the board, and I'll stand here awkwardly until the board takes their action, then I'll jump back in for first read, so. All right, so the first policy for second read this evening is Policy five-fifteen, Protection and Privacy of Pupil Records. This is a policy that the board reviewed relatively recently. However, I should state the purpose of the policy. The school district recognized its responsibility in regard to the collection, maintenance, and dissemination of pupil records and the protection and of the privacy rights of students as provided in federal law and state statutes. And so in partnering with a new vendor for our school messenger service, they have asked that we add language in Article seven of this policy regarding, the following says, "The district shall not share parent phone, mobile number information with third-party affiliates for marketing promotional purposes," but then there's a second line states that "this prohibition excludes text messaging, original opt-in data, and consent." So if a, if a parent opts in for the text messaging data, that would be appropriate on this policy. So that's Policy five-fifteen. Okay, moving on to six-oh-three, curriculum development. The purpose of this policy is to provide direction for continuous review and improvement of school curriculum. There were some very minor changes made to this policy, and really are limited to the legal references because there was a state statute changing some nomenclature and terms and philosophies from world's best workforce to comprehensive achievement and civic readiness. Any questions on 603? Okay, moving forward. 604, instructional curriculum. The purpose of this policy is to provide for the development of course offerings and, for students. There were, again, some minor changes in this policy, again, due to some statute updates from last spring. The elimination of the civics requirement for graduation, for one. And then some, really some structural cleanup from MSBA on this. Elimination of a reference to charter school in what is a district policy. Update for on-track for graduation, then some legal reference updates as well. Any questions on 604? Okay, moving forward to 608. This is instructional services, special education. The purpose of this policy is to set forth the position of the school board on the need to provide special education services to some students in the school district. And again, this is brought forward due to some statutory updates. And really, it's the addition of a final paragraph of this one regarding the fact that the school district may conduct an assessment for developmental adapted physical education, otherwise known as DAP, outside of a full-blown IEP process. Any questions on 608? Sorry, little paperclip mishap, there we go. Policy 618, assessment of student achievement. The purpose of this policy is institute a process for the establishment and revision of assessments to measure achievement towards meeting the Minnesota academic standards, track assessment progress over time, and provide Minnesota graduates information related to career and college readiness. Again, brought forward due to some statutory changes. And again, the... Lost my place. Oh, yeah, so this one is very, limited to a minor insertion of one word, which is Minnesota throughout the policy. So that is 618. Okay, moving forward to 619, staff development for standards. The purpose of this policy is to establish opportunities for staff development, which advance the staff's ability to work effectively with the graduation assessment record, requirements, excuse me, and with students as they progress to achievement of those graduation assessment requirements, and meet the requirements of federal law. Again, minor changes to this policy, again, due to statutory update, state of Minnesota last spring. And again, once again, replacing world's best workforce with comprehensive achievement and civic readiness. That is 619. Any questions on that one? All right, moving forward. Number 620, credit for learning. The purpose, the purpose of this policy is as follows. The policy recognizes student achievement that occurs in post-secondary enrollment option and other advanced enrichment programs. This policy also recognizes student achievement that occurs in other schools, in alternative learning sites, and in out-of-school experiences such as community organizations, work-based learning, and other educational activities and opportunities. Again, this one is brought forward through our curriculum, or excuse me, our policy review process. There were some updated timelines required by the, by the legislature. For instance, students now have two deadlines annually to notify a school district of intent to enroll in PSEO, those being May, excuse me, October 30th and May 30th of each year. And then there's also a new clause that requires post-secondary enrollment providers to notify a school district if a student drops enrollment from a PSEO program. So that is policy 620, credit for learning. Any questions there? Okay. Policy 621, this is a brand-new policy being proposed. This is literacy in the Read Act, the institution of the Read Act in 2023, the revisions thereof in '24. And then the recommendation there, following of, from MSBA to have a standalone policy regarding the Read Act. So every single word of this policy as proposed is brand-new, but it largely follows the language of the statute and the intent of the statute, of course, as well. So that is policy 621, titled Literacy and the Read Act. Any questions on that one? All right. Next is policy 624. Again, brought forward through our review process because of some statutory changes. In this case, some minor changes to the most recent online instruction policy that MSBA has, but we have not, as a district, reviewed this in quite some time. So there's some decently significant changes. A lot of those just because the last time we reviewed this was almost 10 years ago, and a lot has changed in online learning. But the most recent change from MSBA has to do with enrollment and additional courses with the online learning provider under a separate agreement that includes terms for paying any tuition and course fees. Because there are two different options, for instance, that districts can go to partner with online institutions. They can contract for services, or they can simply use the default funding mechanism under the state. So that is policy 624, online instruction. Any questions on that one? All right. And that is all for second read. So I'll turn it back to you, Chair Seben.
Right, this is an action item for second read.
So moved.
Moved by Casey Root, seconded by Jeff Hegley. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Motion passes six zero. On to first read.
All right, so a little bit of a unique scenario. At our last board meeting, we had our FFA advisor, Jacob Wiltz, represented here tonight by our District Activity Director, Gary Revening. Jacob had asked for the board to consider widening the scope of, essentially, what is some language in policy 710 regarding student extracurricular transportation? And Jacob accurately, excuse me, accurately noted that under the language of the policy as currently written, students are not to be driven by anyone other than contracted transportation service or district employees. And so in reviewing this with district leadership, and then communicating last week with the members of the policy committee and proposing, bringing this forward tonight, the proposed resolution is as simple as adding a definition to policy 710. I'll read that as, as it is. So for the purposes of this policy, employees shall include volunteers who, prior to beginning service to the school district, have satisfied the appropriate background screening and vetting requirements. And so we do a background screening and vetting requirement for all volunteers regardless. In this case, any volunteer who is going to drive or transport students would be subject to extra background and vetting for driver's license records and insurance purposes. Any questions on the first read proposal for 710? And of course, this will go back to the policy committee for extended conversation at our June 2nd meeting as well. I think the biggest concern would be the insurance, but it sounds like you've addressed that factor. Yep, and so Tina Burkholder, Director of Business Services, and I reviewed that. And under the language of our policies, we would be, it would be appropriate to have that language.
And then, for the FFA trip, his ask from the last board meeting was then answered in the consent agenda. So he should be good to move forward with everything that.
Yeah, so.
Needed.
So long as the board would adopt that this proposed amendment on June 2nd, his timeline would be in order, I believe, Gary? Is that right?
Yeah.
Okay, no action needed tonight, Chair Seben. So we'll take it back to the policy committee on June 2nd.
Sounds great, thank you, Rob.
Thank you.
All right, and that brings us to adjourning our regular school board meeting, Monday, the 19th, at 6:52 PM. Our next school board meeting will be on June 2nd at 5:00 PM. Hope to see you all there. Good night.